I want to call the word, the Amberly Council Meeting of January 8th. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak.
Here.
Craig Conway. Ed Hattenbach.
Here.
Alita Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wold.
Here.
Scott Larmer.
Here.
Kevin Frank.
Here.
Chief Wallace.
Here.
Rick Decker.
Here. Everyone, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our December meeting. There were two or three small edits that were circulated to all council members today. Are there any further changes to the minutes? If not, we can consider the minutes from December 11th, 2017, approved. We'll now move on to the finance report for November 2017.
Including your packet with the UAM report as a summary of the finances for the village for the month of November 2017. The earnings tax collections for the month of November totaled a little less than $100,000. This is down about 6.7 percent from November 2016's collection of $106,000. And the total amount received so far is $2.3 million. Our estimate for the year was $3 million, so we've collected about 78 percent of the earnings tax as of 2017. The local government fund netted $4,700 during the month of November. Those are the funds that come to us from the state of Ohio. Our total revenue for the month of November was a little over $200,000. And for the total revenue for the year overall, for the general fund, totaled $4.3 million. And that was a, about 90 percent of our budget has been collected on the revenue side. We'd estimated it taken about 4.8, so we're at 4.3 at this point. On the expense side for the general fund, expenses for the month of November totaled $321,000. Our budget for the year, $4.6 million. And as of the end of November, we have spent $3.9 million. So we've expended 85 percent of our budget as of the end of November. That leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance of approximately $5.8 million. And that concludes my review.
Are there any questions for the man? If not, we will move on to the next item. And nice, we have either swearing in of a police officer, and as I've said in the past, this is one of the real privileges of my job to get to do this, so. You're down here.
While the mayor's coming up, I just want to point out who's with Brandon today as he gets sworn in as sergeant. His wife Lindsay, his children Brayden and Macy, his mother Janina Garing, grandfather John Garing, grandfather grandmother Ralph Hall, Margie Hall. Thanks for being here and being part of this. We appreciate it.
Okay. Please raise your right hand to your team member. I, I, Frank Frank, do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. Thus, support the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Ohio. The Constitution of the State of Ohio. The laws and ordinances of every village and every village. Of all ordinances of every village. And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially. And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially. Discharge the duties as a police sergeant. Discharge the duties as a police sergeant. To the best of my ability. Congratulations. Just get a quick picture of you and him real quick up front, and then we'll walk out of here. How's your pen?
Oh, okay. And to sign this first, or?
Yeah.
Chief, I don't want to get this wrong this time. I sign here.
Yeah.
Just sign here, too. All right. I'll just get a quick picture of you and him real quick up front, and then we'll walk out of here. That was your pen.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. One more. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to committee reports. First committee report is the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee. Okay, we'll now move on to committee reports. First committee report is the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Streets Committee met on December 4th. I don't think I. On December, I have that date. I think I'm looking at the minutes, my minutes, and I think my minutes are incorrect. Anyway, we met in December. That is certainly accurate. And we discussed the professional services contract the village has with CT Consultants. CT Consultants is formerly CDS, and they've been providing engineering services to the village for, I guess, 20, 30 years. And they provide a variety of different services, from providing engineering consults on stormwater control, streets, street improvements, architecture. They help review our grants, identify grants to submit to, and in general, public works engineering. The upcoming consulting agreement that is for 2018, they've submitted their proposal in terms of rate schedule, and the rate schedule shows an increase on average of about 1.8 percent. But that varies depending on the type of service individual providing that service, because that ranges from about 1.2 percent to 2.2 percent. If we look over the last several years in terms of what village expenses have been, in 2014, 2014 was about $68,000, 2015, $67,000. And then it was, in 2018, I believe it was about 87, 2017, it was about $87,000. I may have some of these years incorrect as I'm going through my notes again, because that increased expense was associated with the dam that we had to reconstruct over at the Village Green. But in general, the expenses have actually been steady, if not declining. So before you is Resolution 2018-1, first resolution of the year, requesting the council adopt 2000, again, Resolution 2018-1, authorizing the amended CT consultant fee schedule.
Okay, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-1, which would authorize the village manager to enter into the contract. A break. Are there any questions or comments? If there are none, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-1. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously. Ray, assume that concludes your report.
Yes, I'd just like to make one correction to the statement I made just a moment ago in terms of our expenses. So in 2014, it was about $68,000, 2015, about $67,000, 2016, about $87,000, and this past year, 2017, about $46,000. Thank you.
Okay, well now move on to the, well, the Health and Education, Health, Education, and Welfare Committee report that was on the agenda. That will not be submitted this month, but I'm sure that there will be a report next.
Well, I already gave the report for this month because we met on December 5th, which was the day of council meeting, and I quickly put together a report. No report for this.
Okay, so we'll move on to the Police and Fire Committee, and in the absence of Councilwoman Conway, the Vice Mayor will present that report.
Thank you. The Police and Fire Committee met on December 7th, and the committee is recommending ordinance 2018-1, which authorizes a contract with Cost Recovery Corp. for the collection and reimbursement of certain public safety expenses. As has been reported previously, and our residents may already be aware of this because they may have watched the news a few months ago, but Amberly is one of many municipalities in Hamilton County that seeks reimbursement from negligent, non-resident motorists who cause a motor vehicle accident within Amberly Village. That require a response from our police officers, firefighters, or rescue unit. The village has contracted with Cost Recovery Corporation for the last 10 years to recoup some of the costs that are incurred when responding to an accident. Our own residents are not charged if they cause an accident within the village. Homeowners already pay property taxes that subsidize these expenses. To reiterate, under the Cost Recovery Program, only at-fault, non-resident drivers and their insurance policies would receive a reimbursement claim from the village. This is a first reading of ordinance number 2018-1 titled "An Ordinance Authorizing a Contract with the Cost Recovery Corp. for the Collection and Reimbursement of Certain Public Safety Expenses." The new contract and fee schedules are included in the council package. Unless you would like me to actually read the ordinance? Do you want me to do that? Okay.
As noted, this is the first reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments?
What kind of questions? Just turn to your honor.
Oh. Well, the contract is on page 32 of your council packet. And so, basically, generally what it is, Cost Recovery Corporation is like a. Collection, a billing, a collection. Oh, how long?
If you look at section 5.
Thank you.
Of the agreement, that's page 6 of the contract. Wait.
Quick scroll.
Page 6 of the contract, and I can read, I mean.
365 days, beginning January 1st, 2018.
One year with renewals.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, we will move on to the Public Buildings and Parks Committee, and again, in the absence of Councilwoman Conway, Councilman Hattenbach is going to present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Buildings and Parks Committee met on December 26th to review the bids which were opened the previous week for the asbestos abatement for the village, excuse me, for the Amberly Green former clubhouse. Three bids were received totaling, two bids were over $80,000, and one bid was received in an amount of $61,874. The bid recommendation from the committee to council is to, under resolution, to authorize the village manager to enter into a contract for the asbestos removal at Amberly Green clubhouse, in an amount not to exceed $61,874. Show of mind.
Okay, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-2, which would authorize the village manager to enter into a contract for asbestos removal at the Amberly Green clubhouse. Are there any questions or comments?
What's the timeline for this project?
I would expect that they will begin sometime in February, and I don't believe it's expected to last any longer than a two-month period, is what my initial understanding was, but I was not at the committee meeting when this was recommended, so that some additional information may have been presented at that time.
Yeah, sorry. Can I ask if I'll have a question? Yeah, and this is, I don't know if it will be extremely obvious what's going on there, but I would imagine that if there's a lot of trucks of work, residents will have questions about this, so just communicate that and those kinds of things. This is probably something I press to keep in mind.
Yeah, we will include this as a newsletter item so that residents and anybody that uses Amberly Green knows what is going on there at the time.
I believe the asbestos abatement will be done in, really, an indoor project?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the asbestos that we are removing from the building is all interior, so there should not be any exterior work. There is additional asbestos in the roof that we have to deal with later. That'll occur as we get down the road, but at this point, it's all internal. But there will be equipment that'll be on-site. Obviously, there'll be workers there working in the asbestos abatement process, and so it will be noticeable. There'll be traffic there.
I just wanted another comment from the committee meeting, that we did receive a grant, tell pay for this, right? Two grants. Was it grant from Hamilton County and the, from the Community Development Block Grant Program, and then that was $10,000, and the $20,000 grant from the Urban Land Assistance Program to assist in the abatement. So that's saving us some money. And the other point I just wanted to share, again, from the committee meeting, is that the engineer's estimate was about, was almost double the actual cost. So this was actually a very good deal, I guess, for the village, since it's something we have to do anyway. Sorry about that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-2. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
That completes the Public Buildings and Parks Committee report.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Land Development Committee, and as Chair, I'll present that. Before you this evening is Resolution 2018-3, which would authorize the village manager to enter into easement with Greater Cincinnati Water Works for the water line on the north side. This actually is a bit of cleanup work. The water line was actually installed in the early 2000s. It runs from out, close to Ridge Road, or from Ridge Road back, and it was put in at the time to basically serve our vision site. It was installed at that point because of work on Ronald Reagan, and the easement was not put in place, but the water line was put in. This was discovered when we were doing the work to put in place the easement for the new nursing medical office building, so basically now doing a little bit of cleanup work. So I hereby move that we adopt Resolution 2018-3, authorizing an easement with Greater Cincinnati Water Works for the water main 1047. Okay, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-3. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-3. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously. And that concludes the Land Development Committee report. We will now move on to the managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to mention three items. One of those items was listed in the managers' report in regards to the council calendar for 2018. We typically look through the calendar for the upcoming year, see if there's any potential conflicts with holidays, and the only holiday that we specifically identified was in September with the Rosh Hashanah, so we'd probably like to reschedule that particular meeting. So I believe that the 6th of September, which is a Thursday, or the 13th, which is a Thursday, are both available for the majority of council.
I hereby move that we move the September meeting, the regularly scheduled September meeting, to September, Thursday, September 13th. Okay, it has been moved in second that we move the regularly scheduled September meeting from September 10th to September 13th, so that it does not conflict with the Rosh Hashanah holy days. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we move the regularly scheduled meeting from September, from September 10th to September 13th. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you. The second item I wanted to report on was in regards to our popular drug take-back day. We've done that for the last couple of years. It's been very successful here in the village, but most recently, we have actually added a container here in the police department to accept prescription drugs 24 hours a day. So if residents would like to dispose of unneeded medications, they can bring them to the police department and drop them off. This would include any kinds of pills, but we do not take any types of liquids or creams. We don't take your empty containers, so if you bring them in a prescription, just put those pills or that medicine in a little bag, and you can drop that off to the village, and we have a drop box contained within the police department where all of that will be processed. So we just encourage residents to participate and get rid of unused medicines, because that is one of the items that's part of the heroin task force mission, is to eliminate any type of drugs that are, unused drugs that are sitting around, so, because it is susceptible to misuse as well as abuse. And then the last item I wanted to mention was in regards to the holiday package delivery that we embarked on this past year. This was an effort to combat porch pirates, and it was quite successful. So the residents had 116 packages sent to the village this past month that were claimed by residents with proper identification, so we believe that we helped prevent some of that porch pirating that was, that has occurred throughout the country, specifically here in the village. So just wanted to thank our residents for participating in that, and we certainly look forward to providing that security feature again next year, here in 2018. Thank you.
Any questions for the man?
One question regarding that porch pirate program. I think it was a great initiative. I'm just curious, was it, did it pose a burden to the police department or to the staffing here? I mean, I imagine if we repeat it next year, word gets out, we'll probably have more packages.
No, I think we made some adjustments. I don't think it was overbearing at any point, and when the residents stopped in to pick up their stuff, if the dispatcher was alone, they waited for the time to get it, but a lot of times, the residents even called ahead to let us know they were coming, and we had it sitting out waiting for them. So it actually worked out really well, and our reports were basically the one I reported prior to the program, and that's the only one we had.
Any other questions for the man? If not, we will move on to the chief's report.
I only have one item. We're starting the year off right on the police department, in fire department. We got word last week that we received our grant that we put in for, for December. We were looking for a light system to go on our command vehicle because it's so dark, so it'd actually go on the top of one of the Tahoe's, minor Lieutenant Bloom. So when we pull up on a scene, sometimes you can't get the fire truck in close enough or to a crime scene or something. It's gonna be a light system, and it actually mounts to the top of the vehicle. It mechanically, with a remote control, rotates up, extends four feet off the car, and lights up the entire scene. That itself is probably about $16,000 or $17,000. But we also, the total grant we received is $23,675. There's a new state-of-the-art thermal imaging camera that came out, and we were able to, we got awarded that, too. So this is a, this is a huge achievement. We've put in for this, this is firehouse subs. We don't have a firehouse subs in our area, but over the past few years, we've reached out to firehouse subs that are surrounded us to see if anybody, if they would be willing to adopt a fire department. Well, recently, Chris and them found one of the store managers that was really on board and really helped us fight through this, and as all their efforts, you know, we received $23,000. They'll actually make the purchase of the equipment, send the equipment for installation straight to Camp Safety. We'll take the car up there for installation. And it's an item that we seen three years ago at the chief's conference that we've wanted, but we really, it's hard to budget a $16,000 light system into our budget when there's so many other things we need. So this is, this is a big tool, and it's a great job by Chris and as well as Sandy Pie, when again, who stepped up and really helped us out.
Congratulations. Are there any questions for the chief?
Well, now you've got me imagining a chief's conference and adjacent convention center with all kinds of police and fire accoutrements to like dream about and hopefully get.
Yeah.
An expo, right?
It's basically, that's what it is. So that one was in San Diego. So, and basically, you go through there. It's hard to go to San Diego. But it really, you know, you spend a lot of time in classes, and you spend a lot of time getting to mess with and play with this new equipment that comes out to see really what works for your area. And one thing that we desperately needed for a crime, for crime scenes and other things like that, if you go into the park and area, is to be able to light up an area, whether even if it's up at somebody's house or in their backyard. This gives us a tool that we've never had before. We have lighting systems on the fire truck, but if we're too far away, it really doesn't work. Having it on a smaller vehicle, we can get it in close, and then it just increases officer safety and firefighter safety at the same time.
Any other questions? Now we'll move on to my report, and as I said at the December meeting, I'll give a short review of 2017 and kind of look ahead to 2018. In 2017, council met the 12 times in the normal meetings, and there were 62 committee meetings. 62 committee meetings, very similar to 2016, where there were 65. In addition, the Stormwater Advisory Committee met two times, and the Environmental Stewardship Committee met 10 times. Committee met 10 times. The way I'm gonna present my report this year is, last year, I talked about four priorities for the village, and I really think those four priorities pretty much remain the same. So I'm gonna talk about the four priorities as far as 2017 accomplishments and 2018 objectives. The first is to maintain a strong financial position for the village. 2017 accomplishments, strong cost discipline continued, and this is exhibited very well in the monthly finance committee meetings. And so for any residents that might be viewing this online, I really do encourage you to periodically come to a finance committee meeting, because you will really see that there is a lot of diligence, not really the committee necessarily, but by the staff. I mean, it is so obvious when you hear the conversation of what considerations they give to each little expenditure, and look for alternatives to not possibly spend the money. The next big accomplishment was clearly the police levy passing with overwhelming support and at a reduced rate. And then the other one I wanted to mention was the Mercy Medical Office Building being completed, which will provide revenues well into the future for the village. 2018 objective, clearly number one, is 2100 Section Road or the former Gibson Site, trying to move that along. Objective number two, which, you know, I will always put this on there, but I really have a lot of confidence that whether council says it's an object or not, given the culture that has been instilled in the staff here, it will be done, and that's continuing to maintain the cost discipline. Next, we will continue to look for opportunities for the north side. The current medical office building is a great opportunity, but there is room for, you know, another building like that on that site, and we could still handle the traffic. And then, I put down here, respond proactively to surprises, because there will be surprises, just as the city of Cincinnati just saw with the Macy's Building and things like that. You know, we will see surprises, and the most important thing is that you respond to these proactively, and not just allow those to take over your days. Next priority is to provide high-quality valued services for our residents, and I think we do a great job of that. Our residents very much value our services, but we need to focus on those that we provide high value, and I think we do that. Police and Fire, maintenance and trash. 2017 accomplishments, the Chiefs already mentioned some with the package pickup, et cetera, which I will go on to, but, you know, first, I think it's critical, and it was done in 2017, that we continue to review our police and fire are adequately staffed and equipped. Adjustments were made in 2017, including the additional officer that was approved late 2016, and in 2017, we looked at adding to the dispatch. It's critical that we continue to review that. Next, the street program continues to be something that's very critical to maintaining our high-quality streets, which our residents very much value. Next, the left turn signal at Ronald Reagan is something that is very valued, and that not only makes life easier, but is a big safety addition for the village, because it makes making that left turn that much safer. New process for alarm monitoring was approved and will be, will be put in place in 2018. And finally, the new contract with Rumpeke for track was put in place in 2017. The objectives for 2018, I think at this point, I would just say, continue to stay. It's, I can't stress enough, and the Police and Fire Committee very much takes this under its work, is that we ensure that our police and fire are properly staffed and equipped, because we have to keep our officers safe. Third objective, continue to make changes so that Amberly is attractive to current and future residents. 2017 accomplishments, we approved fixes to the upper fall field, which, you know, I think part of this making Amberly attractive to current and future residents is addressing things around recreation. We planted trees in locations where trees have died in recent years. We put in place a TIF for the north side, which again, will provide funds that we can use for, you know, things that will make it better for our residents. And we started to explore a TIF for 2100 Section. The 2018 objectives clearly are to move forward with a plan on Amberly Green, and we have to address what we do as far as maintenance for the track around Village Hall. There are definitely areas on that track which we need to make decisions as to whether we, you know, change the track or something like that, because there's areas, especially on the upper part of the track, that are deteriorating. Fourth objective is, and this will again, always be an objective, is communication. 2017 accomplishment, we had multiple town hall meetings, we put in the new website, thanks to our village clerk, who did excellent work around that, and we continue to develop new mechanisms for communication, social media, videos, and things like that. The 2018 objectives is definitely more of the same, and we definitely need to have more town halls in 2018. So that's kind of my review of 2017, and look forward to 2018. Are there any questions or comments? The only other thing I wanted to mention in my Mayor's Report is that the Environmental Stewardship Committee will meet on, its first meeting of 2018 will be on January 22nd. That concludes my Mayor's Report. For new business, I know Councilman Hattonback wanted to just mention something.
Thank you, Mayor. We are a participant in a suit against the state of Ohio regarding some of the provisions of House Bill 49, and there has been some hearings in Franklin County Common Police Court, which they have stayed the requirement of House Bill 49 that all municipalities, that required all municipalities to adopt a reconciliation income tax ordinance by the end of this month. That requirement has been stayed. Of the 137 municipalities, everybody's pretty much on board with this thing. There are some requirements for the non-participants, they will not be covered by this particular court hearing. That's where we stand right now, we'll know more by the latter part of February.
Any questions on that? Any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. The village manager's appraisal for 2017, as well as, we had a resolution passed to amend for his pay, and bonus. Before you tonight is Ordinance 2018-2. So I would first like to make a motion that we waive the three readings on Ordinance 2018-2, so that we can put the amended contract in place immediately. So I hereby move that we waive three readings on Ordinance 2018-2. Okay, it has been moved in second that we waive the three readings on Ordinance 2018-2. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we waive three readings on Ordinance 2018-2. Please call the roll.
Rich Faradak?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Huthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
I would now like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-2, which would authorize addendum to the village manager's contract to provide for a 3% increase in base compensation as well as a one-time merit bonus of $1,500. It's been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2018-2. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2018-2. Please call the roll.
Rich Faradak?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Huthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
And finally, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the Ordinance 2018-2 as an emergency measure, which as I said, is necessary so that we can put these amendments in place immediately, which is consistent with the term of the manager's contract. It has been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2018-2 as an emergency measure. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2018-2 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Rich Faradak?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Huthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
I apologize for that omission. It is an important, it was an important item on the agenda, and I really apologize for that. We can now consider the meeting adjourned.